I'm going to go ahead and call for a meeting of the Westmoreland City Council to order. It's April the 15th, 2021, 7:00 PM. We have lots of things that are on the agenda tonight, but we'll breeze through them and hopefully we'll be out before midnight for sure. I would like to make an announcement that on April the 29th, did we get that meeting set up?
Yes.
6:00 PM or 7:00 PM? There is going to be a meeting on April the 29th. My guess is it will be 6:00 PM without knowing for sure. It is a meeting that the Tennessee Revolving Loan Fund has set up, and it is a meeting for all of our citizens to attend that have any questions, concerns, input, or any information about our new wastewater treatment plant facility. Each of the council members have with them tonight a letter that I received about a week and a half ago, and then they've received an updated letter to that that actually states, based on our 2018, 2020 audit, that we can build this plant with no rate increase to our customers. Now, honestly, I don't believe that. I think that there will be a rating. You can't build a $6 million-plus-dollar plant and there not be some hiccups and concerns to it. But we're finally off and running on this, and it'll be much better for Westmoreland citizens' safety and everything else. So Pastor Chris, I'm going to turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to you and to all of the council. It is a great honor to get to stand before you guys on behalf of the ministers and our churches. We're proud of our council, and we're proud of our city, and we continue to pray for you guys, and I want to say thank you so much for the work that you do. And I'm honored again to stand before you. Mayor, may I have permission to share one small story that leads to the scripture I want to share?
Okay.
Okay, kind of like a parable that Jesus has always given. A parable is a earthly story with heavenly meanings, right? So my wife and I, we used to, we started out camping with a tent, and she said, if I'm ever going to keep her camping, I better get her off the ground. So we bought us a pop-up, and I learned something about a pop-up, and that is that when you're driving down the road and you hit, you go by a semi, that thing likes to go like this. When you hit bumps in the road, it likes to go all over like this. And I found myself oftentimes, whenever the bumps in the road were happening and a big object was going by, I kept hitting the brakes on that pop-up. And what I did, it would cause the whole vehicle to just shift back and forth, caused more problems. And what I learned is that when there's just bumps in the road, sometimes it's like a pop-up, you have to just put the accelerator down and you pull that pop-up right out of its bumpiness. In life and in leadership, we hit bumps in the road. There's no doubt we've got to take times when we need to get off the road, flat tire. Something's in the road, we better slow down and get around it, make the wise decision, the safe decision. But much of the time in leadership, we hit bumps in the road, and when we hit the brakes, we can oftentimes find ourselves making it worse instead of being the leaders God called us to be. And just tap the accelerator a little bit, don't blow it out, just tap the accelerator a little bit, and know that God put a call on your life to lead. And I'm proud of you because you've stepped up to lead. And that said, I want to share from Colossians, Chapter 3, one of my favorite scriptures. You know, we are all familiar with terminology that says the separation of church and state, which was intended to protect the church, not so much to protect the state. But in saying that, you know, in scripture, we don't find God saying there's a separation. In fact, it's the responsibility of the church to affect the state, to be a positive example, to use the character integrity that God's given you, but also your work ethic and your, well, let's just refer to it again, your character in Christ in how you lead. So in Colossians, Chapter 3, verses 23 and 24, "Whatever you do, work at it with all your heart as working for the Lord, not for human masters, since you know that you will receive an inheritance from the Lord as a reward. It is the Lord Christ you are serving." God puts a call on our lives in many different ways. Sometimes it's a minister, sometimes it's an officer, a military man, or a councilman or a mayor. These are elected roles you're in, but I also believe that they're anointed roles. God's blessed you, and He wants you to do everything you can to the best of your ability. Because one thing we all learn is that when we only give a mediocre effort in anything we do, and we try to put God's name on it, God is offended. If you're going to say, "I work unto God, whatever work I do, however I lead, I do it unto the Lord," then it always deserves your very best. It deserves a humble heart, and it deserves a trusting heart, that God will give you the guidance and direction you need at the moment you need it. That's great. Father, I'm so thankful for the opportunity to speak into our council and our mayor, as well as our other leaders of our community. But I love our town. I love the people of this town, and I'm so thankful that, Lord, you have blessed us. With many things that are before us that are way above our heads and we can't do it on our own, Lord, we certainly ask you for wisdom. We ask you for direction. And God, we also ask that in everything that we do, we do it with a heart that wants to glorify you, and we want to give it our very best. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Pastor Chris. Whoever wants, please stand before the chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kishel, may we call for all the places?
Judge Brown?
Here.
Police Shingin', Brison?
Terry Kirkman?
Here.
David Lee?
Here.
Ron Spoling?
Here.
Let the record reflect that everyone is present. We have form, and we may proceed with the meeting. The first item that is up is to adopt the agenda, and I'm going to ask that some amendments be made to it. If I can get a motion to amend, what I want to do is move Mr. Widner to the top, run under public comments, so that he can address the council and get going. I want to add ordinance, under old business, add ordinance 032021-1. 032021-1, the weather policy, second reading. The next thing I want to do is move the two public works, new hires up, so we can get them out of here. Not that we want to run them all, they're welcome to stay, but they've worked all day, and we just wanted to introduce them to the council. And if it's appropriate, I'd like to combine both of those into one vote, just whatever y'all think, if you want to do two votes. So we'll combine Mr. Woods and Mr. Carter, both into one vote on that. I want to remove, cutting the tree at the gazebo, I put that on the agenda, but I'm going to remove it, as that land has been utilized and turned over to the Veterans Park Board. I'm going to let them make the decision on it. I felt like it may be inappropriate for the city to make that decision, as they are caretakers of it, and I think that that's appropriate.
I talked to the board today, and he wants it removed.
Okay. And that's, that'll be up to their board to decide that, and they were concerned because they didn't have an income as such, and I told the board or some of the members I talked to, if the city couldn't help them with that, we would get donations, we would get the trees replaced and get it done. So I don't, we've talked to all the families, but the markers are over there, so everything's covered. Oh, let's see, I want to add to the agenda under new business, the infrastructure and planning grant, and I'll address that when we get to it. It's CDVG money that is left over. And then also, I want to add, I'm going to do an overview of all the grants from the city at the end of the meeting. And I'd be happy to repeat any of those that you need repeating if I went too fast. Do you have a motion by the Councilman leading?
I second it, Mayor.
We have a second by Councilwoman Head. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, hearing none, we will move forward with the agenda. We didn't have anyone that signed up under public comments, so Mr. Widner, if you would like to come up, and while you're making your way up, I'm going to say thank you for all that you do. You don't work for the city, but you work definitely with the city. And he has been in charge of a lot of the COVID operations and coronavirus operations and the vaccine operations. He and the Director of Health at the Department of Health have had their hands full, and honestly, I doubt that he's slept two good days since last March 20th of 2020. So thank you for all you do, and once again, our--
Thank you very much. I've got one for the business chief.
Yes, sir.
Please keep an eye, just keep an eye on him.
Yes, sir.
You're right behind me, gentlemen.
I know.
Don't worry.
I've got another all short of something.
You've got, you've got.
We go back a long way, yeah. So thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm no expert by any means on this, but I am passionate about weather and about notifications and about our citizens. And when we talk about weather considerations, middle Tennessee, our primary weather, severe weather time, springtime, we know that, but we know that we can have winter storms. The last real bad weather we had up here, real bad weather, was in '09. Y'all remember that tornado, just west of here, okay? And we've been under the gun a bunch of times. We've had some flooding, we've had other things, so we know we're at the mercy of the weather. One of the first things I like to talk about when I talk about weather is we got to know where watching the warnings is, okay? And I know there's a lot, there's a lot of meteorologists in here. When I say that, we got a lot of people that are weather-aware, and they've got that situational awareness, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. So when we talk about a watch and conditions being favorable, we know we need to start looking at things. We know that when we get a warning, that means a severe thunderstorm has developed. And we also know that a tornado can be produced by any severe thunderstorm. Case in point, the '09 tornado, we all watched the news that night. They said, "It looks good, probably not having severe weather." At like 11:02, I think, Sheriff's Office called me and said, "We've got a tornado on the ground just west of Westmoreland." I'm like, "No, you don't." The meteorologist said, "We're not going to have severe weather." Radio's blowing up. I said, "We have something," so I get in the truck, I head up here, I call the Weather Service on my way, and said, "We got a tornado on the ground in Westmoreland." They said, "No, you don't." They heard the radio blowing up. They had to go back and look at the radar signatures on their radar, and it was just a little blip. So that also tells us that we're so vulnerable to the weather, because technology, quite honestly, is not where it should be for severe weather detection. How does a meteorologist know that a tornado is a tornado? There's nothing in their, on their computers that tells them it's a tornado. So a tornado starts off like this, and it stands up, and a lot of times they can see on radar that there's rotation, and they, and we might see formal clouds, but until they make the ground, they're not. So conditions may be favorable, but for a meteorologist to know there's a tornado on the ground, somebody tells them, a police officer, a firefighter, a weather spotter, a citizen, they get reports, then they pick up that debris ball, and they say, "We're tracking this tornado." Otherwise, they're tracking the rotation. Okay? So a severe thunderstorm warning's developed and has either produced a tornado, or radar's indicated intense low-level rotation. That's what, that's what gets us right there. It's conducive to tornado activity. So the disparity in what we're doing today, and what we've done in the past, and what we can do today, is the Weather Service has gone to storm-based prediction, and they're using polygons. So what we tend to do is look at a warning, and not too long ago, Southern County went under the warning, the entire county was under the warning, and it didn't matter where the dangerous area was. Because we know up here in Westmoreland, we've had tornado warnings before, and it looked, not necessarily like it does today, but it didn't look bad, because Cotton Town or Henderson ville or Portland, it was going to go north and east of, north and move east of Portland, or of Westmoreland before it got here. So polygons, just remember that, and we'll talk about polygons in a little bit, a little bit. So the first thing that I like to talk about is situational awareness, and a lot of us have situational awareness, some people don't have any, okay? They sit back and they wait for things to happen. But we know by watching the weather, whatever your favorite weather is, 24517 WBKO, I don't care who it is, we know two to three days out when we have potential severe weather. You agree with that? So we really start looking at that as it comes in, and they kind of hone in on it, and they get a little better and a little better, and they finally say, "See, it's going to happen, it's not going to happen, it's going to slide south of us, or we could have 75 mile an hour winds like we did up there a few weeks ago, straight line winds." Number two, you have multiple ways to get warnings. We recommend at least six. No weather radios are number one. We'll talk about no weather radio a little more towards the end. The SAME code, specific area message encoding, Southern County is 047165, okay? That just gives us Southern County, so we don't get Chatham County, we don't get Davidson County. And in years past, when we had older weather radios, we wouldn't know what was going on over there. But at that time, we had a four-minute lead time on a tornado touchdown, we got a 14-minute lead time right, and that's broken, because technology has been a little better. 162525, 2525 is the transmitter for all no weather radio. It's located in Lafayette, Tennessee. So it's up on the hill here with you, it's on, it's on, that elevation is real close to Westmoreland, so you're not fighting going on, you know, the ridge, going down the ridge. I get that transmission very well at my house on a weather radio. Number two, local TV, radio, we listen to a lot of that. Number three, cell phones. Over 90% of the population has a cellphone. Over 80% of the population has a smartphone. Now, does that say everybody, and the demographics are different, does that mean everybody in Westmoreland or up there, or Portland, in a particular area, has those numbers? No, it doesn't. And if you look at demographics in different age categories, those numbers are going to change as well, because we know people that don't have cellphones, so that's something we can count on. But that's a good source. All of us, does anybody in this room not have a cellphone? Does anybody in this room have a flip phone? So we've got smartphones, we take them everywhere with us. That's evidence, when we drive down the road and we see all these people on their phones. How many of you in this room do that? Okay, distracted driving. So, but my point is, my point is, I hate, I hate you, Father. My point is, you walk around the house in your sleep pants with a phone in your pocket, don't you? You know where your phone's at. I've had kids, kids come to Sunday School class without their Bible, but they got their cellphone, and I asked where their cellphone or their Bible is, well, I forgot, but I've got my cellphone, it's here in my pocket. You know what I'm talking about? Okay. In the cellphone, we've got a wireless emergency alert. That's the one that goes off that you can't stop from going off, and it takes over your phone. How many of you have that go off? Okay? If you look in your phone and go Settings, go Notifications, scroll all the way to the bottom, that's the one that says Amber Alerts, Emergency Alerts, and Public Safety Alerts. You can take those out if you want. I don't recommend doing that, because what they use those for, if you see a particularly dangerous situation come across your phone, that means in your geographical area, you've got problems, because it is GPS-based. The problem with some of these apps we talked about are location-based, zip code-based, address point-based, things like that. So if you're not at that address point, and where they really come in beneficial is when, when do most of our storms tend to happen?
At night.
At nighttime, or when you're in bed, that's the most dangerous time. Okay? Another thing is internet, family, friends, coworkers, social media, we know social media does so many things, mostly not great, but so many things, and we can push a lot on social media. An outdoor warning. So if I, if I say outdoor warning, what does an outdoor warning siren mean to you?
Outdoor warning.
You can answer that. Okay. In short, an outdoor warning siren is a message that is sent telling a person to go inside and seek additional information. The intent of an outdoor warning siren is basically in the verbiage of the name of the siren, outdoor warning for people who are outside, and it's telling you, "Go inside, seek additional information." So what are they, what are they intended for? Downtown areas where people are out, and about areas where you may be responsible for a group of people. Some people will say schools, but I don't agree with that, because if a principal, administrator, or teacher does not know where my child is, or where your child is, something's wrong. And they should be on, they should be on their game when it comes to weather, all right? So not a good point with me if you, if you try to sell to any of my schools. Outdoor warning sirens put at schools because it's a county problem, and it doesn't cost anything to put the siren, and that's why they're like that in a lot of cities across the, across the nation. What if I can't hear my siren in my house? We hear that a lot. Well, they're not intended to notify you in the house, they're intended for what I just talked about. The problem with that is ambient noise is in your house, the way houses are constructed today aren't like they're constructed when these sirens were developed for airway sirens. So the technology is cold war era airway sirens, and they've moved that into, in the, into the arena of, "We want to sell sirens, and we want to notify people," all right? So number one, they're not being made to notify people who are in homes, that's problematic. Number two, if you try to do that, okay, wind noise, TVs, things going on inside, kids, construction materials are the big thing. Being over here, a siren inside a home is problematic if you choose to do that. I'm not here to tell you what you ought to do and what y'all not do, but we can, we can have open dialogue and discuss it. I know some people aren't going to be happy with, with my point of view on things, but I can discuss it with anybody as calmly as anybody wants to. So there's a lot, there's a lot of issues there, so let's go back to the polygon. So the correlation between the warning and the polygon, and what I want to do is I want to hand you a, an image from a tornado warning. You got to pass that around, so the polygon of the circle, that's the southern tip of Southern County. Southern County went under a tornado warning for that, but that little tip of the peninsula in Hendersonville was in the polygon, so Southern County went under the warning. So bulletin EAS activation request, tornado warning, National Weather Service, Nashville, Tennessee, 12:35 AM, Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. How many times have we heard that? And you can hear that voice. Tornado warning for Central Davis County, Middle Tennessee, South Central Southern County, Middle Tennessee, West Central Winston County, Middle Tennessee, until 1:00 AM Central standard time. At 12:35 AM, a severe thunderstorm capable of releasing the tornado is located near Nashville moving east at 45 miles an hour, and it goes through everything else, okay? So the area that they're talking about here is Lakewood, Harmony, and Old Hickory, when it's going to reach there about 12:55. But because it hit that peninsula in Hendersonville, it puts Southern County in warning. So if we don't follow the polygon, and the main point in this is, if we are situational aware, and we see that Southern County's gone under a tornado warning, you've got to look at the polygon to see where the danger is, because look, we're 542 square miles. I didn't, I didn't do any drawing on that to see how many square miles that was, it's not a lot, a few square miles. Okay? That's a prime example, or an entire polygon in the western part of the county that's going to overshoot Westmoreland, if we don't look at that and we think it's coming our way. Now, additional, as the lines come through, we know that things can pop up, we know that. But that just happened to be, when I did a little research on that and found that, is just a great example of the correlation between the polygon and the warning area being the county. So if we activate sirens that aren't in the polygon, what does that do? So that leads me to the next piece of this, complacency. Are we, is Southern County in tornado alley?
Is the new tornado alley open?
Well, no. Sometimes they call it Dixie Alley, okay? But it's not tornado alley. Tornado alley is still west of here. Joplin, Missouri is in tornado alley. Tornado sirens everywhere. On May 22nd, 2011, one of the most devastating tornadoes in the nation's history directly killed 159 people and injured over 1,000 in Joplin, Missouri. From National Weather Service perspective, this was essentially a warned event. That means they produced the data, the product, so the product they produce is watches and warnings. They produced the product, the warning, they put it out there. It was a warned event, and an advance notice of the tornado was given. Critical information was communicated and received, and most people sought the best shelter available to them. The difference in a bad storm and a vital tornado is catastrophically different, okay? So understand this, if we're in a vital tornado, bottom line is, you may not survive. Okay? That's the cold artifacts. So that's why we, we go to the places we're supposed to go. So when I talk to people, I ask, and I poll people in here, I could poll you, when a tornado warning is issued, what are you to, do you get your pillows, do you get your helmet, do you go to your safe place? Do you watch TV? Do you seek additional information? Do you look outside? I have looked outside. Typically, I'm not at home when we've got bad weather. My wife and my kids, my kids aren't home now, they've moved out, and they were, they were in a shelter. When we built our home in 2001, I built a shelter under my house, concrete and rebar, okay? So when a warning is issued, the question I've got to ask is, what do you do? What do y'all do? What are you doing? If you don't go where you're supposed to go, you're not doing it right. Okay? We had a four-minute lead time now, we got about a 14-minute lead time, that time's getting better, and I think it'll continue to get better. I'm reading from the executive summary of the service assessment, National Weather Service Central Region Service Assessment, Joplin, Missouri, from that tornado. This is the executive summary. Many key findings within this report involve societal aspects of warning response and risk perception. Responding to warnings is not a simple act of stimulus response, rather is a nonlinear, multi-step, complex process, relationships between false alarms. Let me talk about false alarms. The stats I had a couple of years ago-- The stats I had a couple of years ago are 84% of the time submitted thunderstorm warnings in Southern County are false. 90-something percent of tornado warnings in Southern County are false. Can you see where I'm going with this? Relationships between false alarms, public complacency, and warning credibility are highly complex as well. The vast majority of Joplin residents did not immediately take protective action upon receiving a first indication of risk, usually the local siren. Regardless of the source of warning, most of us further assess their risk by waiting for, actively seeking, or filtering additional information. So when we watch our favorite meteorologist. Do you think there's a chance that if we've got a bad storm coming here, and there's a, there's as equally as bad storm going into Nashville, you think they're going to stay on our storm? They'll try to cover both of them. What do you think their priority is? And I'm not beating them up about this. That's just a fact, because we've watched them before. And they'll do, they'll do their best, but I, I would honor to say that if there are two equally bad storms coming, Nashville probably won't cope. Just, just call that out there. The reason for doing so are widely, but largely dependent on an individual's worldview, formed by most, most of our previous experience with severe weather, mostly important, the perceived frequency of siren activation. So we set them off for false alarms, which, false alarm could be the real thing because, because that product is produced by the data that they were sending. I'm not going to fault that. Plus, when we test the sirens, people hear them. Mostly, most importantly, the perceived frequency of siren activation in Joplin, that the majority of survey participants, participants could become desensitized or complacent to this method of warning. This suggests that the initial siren activations in Joplin and severe weather warnings in general have lost a degree of credibility to most residents, one of the most bad characteristics for successful risk communication. Instead, the majority of Joplin residents did not take protective action until processing additional credible information or confirmation of the threat and its magnitude from a non-routine extraordinary risk trigger. This was generally achieved in different ways, including physical observation of tornado, seeing or hearing observation, an urgency of the threat on radio, television, or hearing a sick, non-routine siren alert. So there's a lot of things going into this. And bottom line is, we can talk about a tornado touchdown after it's touchdown. We talk about what happened before touchdown, touchdown. We don't know whether they're going to touchdown, when they're going to touchdown, or any of that. So we've got to be as best prepared as we can be. So I can tell you that this is a very comprehensive report. Um, I actually participated in a, in a service assessment with the Weather Service in Denver, Colorado, in that area from a flood. And we spent a week out there, so I know how comprehensive they, um, what kind of job they do on this. So, um, it's a very thorough job. So National Weather Service Service Assessment, you can look at Joplin, you can look at Moore, you can look at several things that are all on file with the National Weather Service. You can read those to gather additional information. So my fear is, based on this information and other information, that as a society, we're making people, we can tend to make people complacent. So when we go back to know weather radio, my personal opinion is the best method of notifications, know weather radio. So we all have smoke detectors in our homes. And if I ask everybody who has a, who has a smoke detector, and then I ask people raising their hand, "Who has a weather radio?", I think those numbers are going to be a little bit disparaging. Okay? And part of that reason is, we don't like the radio waking us up at 2:00 in the morning. And I've got to get up at 4:30 to get ready to go to work. Because it wakes me up. It's waking you up because of the bad weather coming. And it's waking you up because, um, I don't get up at 8:30. If I'm, if I'm up most past 8:30, and I get up at 4:00, 4:30. But in that period of time, I want, I want, I want something to wake me up. Okay? So, um, the other methods are this, this smartphone. Okay? Multiple apps on this smartphone, the WEA on this smartphone. It weighs about four pounds because I've got four charges on this thing, because I burn, burn through it about twice a day, and I have to recharge it. All right? This, it goes with me everywhere. If I, if I leave the house without the phone, it's like, "Look, I got to go back," because I've got to have my phone. Okay? There is a chance you're going to lose cell service on this phone. Not real likely. This time last year, we were, we were in Putman County looking for people. Cell service was horrible, but they got the warning, they got the information. Um, so to speak directly to your outdoor warning, um, the first thing I would say is having somebody go and push the button and turn it on doesn't make sense to me. There are systems that can actually activate that. There are pieces within a system that can set it off based on polygon. If that's the route you choose to go, I'm good with that. My opinion would be, let's put a weather radio in everybody's house. Okay? You could, the problem is, not everybody's going to want one. All right? A lot of people have weather radios. Um, I can, and I will look at this. I spoke to the state, the state director of timber came to the funeral tonight. And we talked about this. We talked about a hazard mitigation grant during regional rain. With that grant, comes some stipulations, some things you can do, can't do. It's a 75/25 match. So you could, you could look at doing a, a, trying to get a weather radio in everybody in a low to moderate income range. Or you could try to do all, I don't know how many rooftops there are in Southern County. The tax assessment office can tell us how many rooftops there are. And we could look at that, and we could do a multiplier on, on demographics to see either an age group, uh, income group. There's several things we can do to identify who would like to have a radio. But I think you could put, a weather radio's going to cost you about $25 when you buy them in bulk. You put a few thousand dollars a year into a fund and buy weather radios, place a fire program on them up, put them in people's houses. And we do, we do that. We ask them to put them in the house, put the antenna up, hit the volume, make sure you can hear it. Okay? And that's the best source of warning. That's what's going to wake you up. And I tell people, when you put it in the house, don't put it in, don't put it right next to your bed, put it where you got to get out of bed. Okay? Um, I spoke about a storm shelter earlier. If you have a storm shelter in Westmoreland, www.southernema.org, we've got a storm shelter registration, um, piece on our website. And what that does is we identify all the storm shelters in the county if we have a tornado come through. Uh, we can put those address points in our CAD, and it can tell us where to shelter from, because you may be under repile, under your garage, um, in your garage, in the yard, um, wherever it may be in your home. And we use that on a daily basis tied to our CAD system. So, um, weather radio, multiple apps, um, social media, TV, Code Red, I skipped over Code Red. Code Red is one of our most valuable pieces that we have. We need to get more people, we need to call honestly better, push that information out, and get more people signed up. Um, when the sheriff's office had the, um, a shooting not too long ago, we did a four-mile circumference of the crime scene to say that there are people with a gun. Um, the nice thing about Code Red is it automatically triggers on the web service information goes out, and nobody has to tell us to do anything. So whatever, however you set it up, severe thunderstorms, or warnings, or tornado warnings, it automatically triggers and sends that message out. So, um, I could talk for a long time on this. I don't want to go, um, I don't, I don't want to step on toes. I don't want to make anybody mad. Um, I'm trying to be as politically correct as I can, which I don't do real well. Um, but, um, I think you can see kind of the way I lean, if you will. But I will answer any questions you have, and I'll, I'll talk to you one-on-one at any time you, you need to, except John Rad.
Any questions?
Mr. Rad, we appreciate you coming to tonight in lightness of some of these, uh, we're going to be studying it quite in depth over the next ten weeks.
I just can't wait, don't even wait to hear anything, so. I'm serious. I'm joking. So thank you. Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next item up is the amendments from the March 18th, 2021 meeting.
Thank you.
The motion to approve the amendments from the March 18th meeting. A motion by Councilman Smalling, third. Second by Councilwoman Williams for a fair and discussion. Do you remember what multiple votes you traced by need to? Ms. Kisho, there's no discussion, let's call parole.
Brown.
Yes.
Head.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
But record reflect, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the March 2021 financial statement.
We have a motion that we adopt the March 2021 financial statement as is.
A motion by Councilman Brown to adopt the financial statement.
My second, mayor.
Have a second by Councilwoman Head. We're open for discussion. You might note that the property tax did come up considerably in March. We'll, I hope that it continues to trend in that direction for, for April. It makes it quite tough to, to do the next budget with it having that amount of, of difference in it from what was predicted for it to be. But it, it's all a guess at night when you do it a year out. So we do our best with it and, and hope for the best. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Kisho?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
But record reflect, the motion carries unanimously. We will move into old business now. The first item that is up is the IDB appointments. Uh, I would ask that when the motion and the second is made, that we know for sure there's been some discussion about the terms as to whether it was going to be new terms or, uh, I have an email from, uh, Mr. Andy Lee that, that is basically, uh, saying that it would be the terms for, uh, Mr. Brett Little, who has resigned. Uh, he has moved out of the city, so that's a requirement for him. And that Mr. Reagan, uh, is resigning from the board also. So with that, we have had two, two persons that are interested in it. Uh, Ms. Carter is here tonight, and I don't think Mr. Bell is, but, uh, uh, both of these individuals have been known very well around Westmoreland. And, uh, obviously, if we get a motion, what happens?
Mr. Brown, I make the motion to appoint Tony Bell from Fred Carter to the IDB board as recommended by the IDB to the, uh, ones that filled the terms that once quit and one had to move, uh, had to resign, Brett Little, Chris Gray.
My second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lee, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson, uh, for the terms to be filled by Mr. Bell and Ms. Carter for the remaining term. And according to the resolution 082019-1, uh, that term ends on December the 31st, uh, 2023. Now, I'm, I'm going to add in a little caveat here. Uh, some discussions came up, um, about this when, when it was deferred, about, uh, things not being brought to the council. That, uh, was a decision that I made, uh, in 2015, 2016. And if the council wants me to change that, it's just a matter of making it happen. Uh, the industrial board members, the planning and zoning members, the, uh, members of almost any committee, uh, Board of Appeals members, our attorney, recorder, treasurer, and our judge can all be, all, according to our charter, be brought up in January for reappointment for that year. Uh, Westmoreland is notorious for, uh, when we get a body to fill a seat, we, we hang on to them till they pass away. So, uh, if, if we want to start putting that on the January agenda every year and making that happen, uh, we can. Uh, I'll just leave it and defer it to the board that, uh, when we set the agenda for next January at our work study, uh, if we want to make that happen, we can. But I just wanted to throw that in, that that was why these, uh, appointments, um, that were discussed, that were not brought to the board, that was why. And if there's anybody to blame on it, it, it is me to blame because I made the decision on it. Uh, being the chief cook and the bottle washer, sometimes I didn't get to make an executive decision. Uh, it's not always the right one, but we do our best and move on. So, uh, uh, slap me if need be, but, uh, we'll, we'll take it from there. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Kisho, if you'll call parole, please.
Smalling?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Head?
No.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
The motion carries, there's three yes, two nays. So Ms. Carter and Mr. Bell will be serving on the Industrial Development Board until December the 31st, 2023, and maybe a lot longer after that, so. The next item is to vote for second reading ordinance number Z032021-1 for weather policy.
I want that motion for the weather attendance policy on second reading.
My second. We have a motion by Councilman Smalling, a second by Councilman Brown to pass the weather attendance policy 032021-1, which, uh, I have it written down as ordered, so I may be wrong on that. So, um, we're open for discussion.
We adopted that that this was not necessarily for winter weather, it could be for this type of year and other things as well.
That, that is correct. I mean, we were just talking about severe weather. Uh, one of the hiccups that was on that was that, uh, it discusses what's an essential employee and what's a non-essential employee. If it's one thing that the, uh, coronavirus and COVID epidemic has taught us, all of our folks in, in Westmoreland are, are essential. Uh, I don't think that the, I may be wrong, but I don't think that the council wants to get into discussion of who's essential. of who's essential, who's not essential. If you do, then hold on to those thoughts because we're going to be revisiting this policy pretty soon after the charter completes of being amended and is ratified. So with this, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll bring up the... There was a part of the policy that we talked about that mentioned the personnel we provided the choice between time off to be used at a later date equivalent to time awarded off with pay. And I mentioned this sounds a lot like comp time, and I believe that was the intention of the policy. We had mentioned how to document that comp time. I don't know that this policy necessarily has to address that because that's a formality and logistic piece, but I did want to bring that up because I don't think we ever really closed that discussion. And I wanted to bring it to the table again in case there was any further things that we wanted to mention about it.
That was your time?
Yes. And I'm not sure if the language needs to be changed to address the fact that it is actually comp time, just to make it very understandable to everybody who reads the policy in the future and for employees who will be utilizing this in the event that it's necessary to, to go into effect for them. So I guess that's... My recommendation is we just look at the language and think we can pass the ordinance, but then change that to comp time where it states that it actually says that and just make a change to that.
Okay.
What would be your recommendation?
End line, I believe it's the last paragraph. I believe it's the third sentence, those employees deemed essential personnel were provided the choice between time off to be used at a later date. And just simply remove that, you provided with comp time. Equivalent to time awarded, that's probably not necessary. All for paid, and I think just changing the language here, will be provided comp time or payment incurred for the time served during closure of government operations. That makes sense, Dean. I don't know, I may have some questions there.
In other words, the employee would have the choice of what he wanted to correct. Well, if you need time to study some more, just don't vote to pass it, and we'll bring it back up at the board study.
Mr. Brown, have you seen it?
I don't think I have.
I think we're doing... Mr. Brown, say it forward, pass it.
This needs to be clear, when you're not talking about overtime, you don't want to get into overtime here, this is just a replacement for the time off. Just make sure the language makes that clear. I'd be happy to look at it.
I would like that, too.
Okay. Do I have a motion to defer it then, and table temporarily defer what we have then?
I'll make that motion.
Just defer it to the next meeting?
Defer it to the work study. Or the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll be at the next meeting, so why don't you make it the next meeting?
Yeah, we're just going to defer so that we can make sure that the language is correct. So if it's okay, we'll do withdrawal on the motions and make the motion to defer. I'll second this. So a motion to defer by Councilman Lee and second by Councilman Brown. And if you would send Mr. Bradley a copy of that so we can research it.
So we're just defer to the next one?
Right.
Be to May 20th.
All in favor of the deferral, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is deferred. Okay, the next item. We're going to introduce you to Jordan Woods and Roger Carter, who has been working with the Public Works Department for a few days now. And Aaron has made the recommendation that these gentlemen be hired to the two full-time slots that we have. I explained to them that they are welcome to go ahead and start working. All the paperwork, background checks, everything has been done, but it's not official till everyone puts their stamp on it.
I move that we hire Jordan Woods and Roger Carter as full-time Public Works Department.
My second motion.
If you have to stand up and come up so they can say hi to us. I can attest that they're hard-working individuals. They were out in the rain the other day and the mud and everything. So I just want to commend you guys for wanting to be a part of the city of Westmoreland. And we hope that you feel at home. If there's anything you'd like to say, feel free to do a...
Proud to be here, proud to be working pretty hard.
I thank you.
Thank you very much.
They both do a good job. Jordan's been here a few days longer than Roger. Roger, the little guy here, Roger's the big guy there. But they both did a really good job, really getting on with the garbage truck. Jack said that they're fast-paced, so that's good. They fit in so far, so hopefully everything continues to click along when it's going. Hopefully, they like it and decide to make it home.
Any other discussion, discussion or questions, concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time out to come tonight.
Yes, sir.
The next item is the water tap on the ransom. Mandal Road, Basiri Shab is here to represent the family. I think she sent out emails to everyone to kind of discuss it. She may have talked to someone on the phone. But what we found, I guess... Is Anne still out here? I couldn't see if she was back there, you had gone out. He discovered that, I guess, one of the meters had been cut some time back. So we've... We're just going to listen to what happened and we couldn't find any paperwork on it, I don't think. That anything was ever brought to the council or to the utility commission. So we're going to just listen, and then we will put a stamp of approval or non-approval or whatever we need to do at the end.
Basically, your citation is correct. We thought we had permission, but nothing was in writing. It was verbal back in 2016. My mother's on a fixed income, so we asked that the meter be, when we say pulled, but turned off and that bill be discontinued, and that happened. But then Mr. Sizemore sent the letter, and I talked to him, and he basically told me what I needed to do. And that's what I seek tonight, is the appropriate permissions and written authority to do that so that we have it in writing if it ever comes up again. So whatever we need to do, I don't want to cut any corners or do anything wrong. I just want to make it right and make sure it's right in written minutes.
Okay, good. Could you tell us exactly what happened at that point in time? Was it a bad leak or something? And was the meter disconnected, or was it turned off?
We have many, many leaks out there. I've been in front of this council before, and the last leak was like a $2,000 leak. And we couldn't get it waived because we already had one. So you were kind enough to let us pay it over six months, $500. So that farm's had lots of leaks, so we pay lots of water. But as I said, we originally... I was raised there, we did not have water the whole time I was growing up. We asked them to bring it down to ransom, and they didn't. And they brought it down to Dutch Creek. So but we personally had to have it ran under the parade uphill to my mom's. And so she had a tab for that and a meter and everything. And then my sister built a house there, and she had a meter and a tab for that. But again, in 2016, because my mom was paying the minimum bill. And again, because she was on a fixed... She is on a fixed income, and I handle all of her business. We had asked if it could be turned off and, you know, all of it just go through one because that's what was being paid, and it happened. And I guess we didn't know at the time we needed to come and get it in writing. We didn't get... We didn't look at the ordinance. I don't even know if that ordinance was in effect at that time. I just really can't tell you. But like I said, since it's been brought to our attention, I just want to make it right now and make it written. So if it ever comes up again, I can show this and say, hey, here we are, it's okay. Whatever that means, if that meter needs to be turned off again and she paid that minimum bill, I'll pay it, you know, whatever it is to make it the way it should be.
Any rule to look at or address the council? You included a copy of the ordinance with her where it says, it's section 18, I don't want 12, and multiple services through a single meter, so.
Yes, so we'd actually went out there to look at doing another tab, or not another tab, but to allow another dwelling be tied into the meter that her mother had been using prior to joining into her sister's meter. Well, when I got out there and I seen what was going on, that's when I kind of did a little research just to kind of see and make sure that if there was any kind of letter or anything, any prior permission that I could find. I didn't find any, and I had went to the house a couple times, which I'm sure they were at work, and I didn't get ahold of anybody. So that's when I sent the letter. You know, it's talking about, you know, there's not... We're not allowed to have multiple dwellings on a single meter. There's other issues with this and that in business and things of that nature. We've talked about this before in meetings and work studies and plans. You know, it has been allowed in the past, I know for short periods. I know for certain it has. A long period of time, I'm not 100% sure it has, it hasn't been since I've been...
You might address why it is like that, that the state has told us. And the rules might have actually changed with the state. I don't know that it's if you have multiples, and it's on your distributing water.
Right. So if, according to the state, if so if I... If we as the city, say she has one meter, we meter her water to her house. If they then branch it off, and if they put a meter on it and try to meter it out in like a business or to apartments or something like that, then they have to have a license. As long as it's not metered after our meter, as long as we're the only meter on it, we're the only one technically selling the water. Because what happens is so, say a business has three businesses in St. Dylan, they have one meter with us, then they have several meters in the house or in the business that separate the three businesses. And then the business owner gets the one deal, and then they split the business, the businesses up, and you know, they have to pay it like that. Then they're actually selling water because they're buying it from us and selling it through those three meters, and they have to have a water license to be able to do that. And they have to perform tests and everything like we do. As long as it's not metered, to my understanding, there's no... There's no restrictions on it from the state. But we as a city, I think, decided to do this, from what I'm understanding. And what makes sense to me is that we did this because of... The city's losing a minimum bill every month. So if her mother's only using 500 gallons, her sister's paying the minimum bill plus for that 500 gallons and everything her sister uses, well, the city is not getting the minimum bill from both dwellings. And, you know, we have to keep that... Even though she's not hooked to that meter and that service, we have to maintain that meter and that service line. If there's a leak on our side of that service, we still have to go out there and repair it. So we still have the cost of the key. And things like that. So I believe that's why the city had decided, you know, to make that an ordinance so that we were getting the minimums from every dwelling and to prevent somebody from putting an apartment complex in and paying one bill and having, you know, 10 dwellings there. So that's what I'm going to get it from. From my standpoint, I don't see an issue with this if, as long as they're both paying the minimum. But other than, you know, if in the future, hopefully a long time from now, the mother either passes away or moves or whatever, you know, if that house is rented out or something, then I can see it become an issue. That's the only time that I would think that it would be an issue. But, you know, when you're trying to take care of a family member and, you know, like she has the power to turn you over and things like that, it's all on the same piece of land, you know, it's... I don't have a right to... You know, I guess it's just, in my opinion, I don't have a problem with it. But I don't want to open the door for hundreds of other people to come in and say, well, hey, you know, I'm in the same situation. But the main thing is the city's not going to lose money from the minimum if they both pay the minimum, and they're not going to lose money from the water because it's going to be metered regardless. Every gallon will be paid.
I'm a language person.
Yeah.
So you know, I look at the sentences and how they... So it does, according to our ordinance, tell me if I'm wrong, there can be one meter as long as it's whatever is used plus a minimum bill to cover that percentage.
Very interesting, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure I've seen that right.
Yeah.
And you answered a very important question for me. We're not in violation of any state statute.
As long as the council agrees.
So if in years from now, if something had to be split, wouldn't it be possible to put that back onto that meter?
Yes, that meter is our meter. So I mean, it goes with that property. You know, she paid for the tab and everything. So if they decided to hook it up, you know, 10 years from now and paying for it, that's already been all paid for, the tab is on her property.
It is.
I'm assuming that it is.
No, it is. It is on her property. So what you're asking us to do is make a motion that states that they will pay an additional minimum bill with whatever is being used.
I'm a...
Look, she... Is what you're asking, so that we can be legal? Yes. I'm asking the Public Works Department, you're going to be asking this?
Whatever it takes to be within this ordinance and it be written so that we don't have any problems.
So you're being strong on that one, right?
Yes.
And she's going to ask for a copy of the minutes, so she has...
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I want to know exactly how to word this, so you know how to...
Yep.
Okay.
My question to the council...
My question to the council is if we do this for her, if somebody else comes in here, everybody understands.
Let's get a motion on the floor so we're legal.
Yes. I make a motion, and y'all don't figure out how to say this. I make a motion that we allow Ms. Sherry to have a, how do I write this? To pay the, what's being metered through the meter plus an additional minimum bill, minimum bill for the other property. Does that covers?
For her mother's residence.
For her mother's residence.
Yeah, and address, I'm not sure which one's 1156 and which one's 1260.
1260 is my mother.
Okay.
So pay, to pay the minimum bill for 1260, it's the meter, whatever comes through the meter for 1156.
Well, minimum bill there.
Okay, minimum, okay.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilman Leif, to authorize 1256 and 1260 to both be metered with a minimum bill plus the additional that we would be incurred. Other discussion?
Okay, I'm going to address what you said. Technically, our ordinance states, we are going by our ordinance states. As long as there is a minimum bill being paid, if nobody came before us, we would follow our ordinance, what our ordinance states.
I'm not asking for anything special. I just want to get permission to be within the ordinance which you allow and have it in writing.
The way I read it.
Go ahead. I was going to say, and honestly, with those stipulations, it meets everything that our ordinance actually requires.
Again, I'm not asking for anything special that at all. I just want to get compliant. And where I'm not compliant now is I don't have it in writing and I'm not paying the minimum bill for my mom. And that's what I want. Mr. Smalling, sir.
Did this one tract of land at this time, is that correct or is it?
No, it's all in my family. My sister owns eight acres. She's building a house. My other sister owns hers, but the rest of the farm, it's 160 acres. It's in my name and my sister's name, my sister's name. So it's all in our family. No one else lives on the property that's not in our family or that's not devoted to our family.
Is the land on both, on just one side of the road or are they on two different sides of the roads?
No, it's on either side of Ransom River, but it's, I'm probably on Dutch Creek and Ransom River. So.
Both of the houses are.
I foresee the only problem that Mike would come up is, is for the first reason, when you went out there to check to see if the new residence that's being constructed could use the meter or not, or if a meter was available. I'm not sure that I understand what, what created, you go out there and find it start with.
But he had originally asked to use that meter. Since then, he's came in and paid a tab fee and everything for his own.
Okay, well, that's got all that covered. Other than discussion? Congratulations.
Brown?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I just want to say I've been in the force of council twice and you've always been very professional, very courteous, even though I didn't work that out from the first one, you're still very fair and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
And I will be getting those minutes. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the water bill on 31 E and Dixon and Collins. I don't thank anyone from the Collins family or Dixon families here. I understand they came into City Hall possibly today and.
Mr. Collins stated and set out the, uh, payment for each, but just anything in the pool. Bill active adjustment, but it's still.
That was a lot harder. Okay. Moving along, Ms. Keith Simpson, July 4th, Freedom Fest time again.
It is. Now, what we're here for is we, as the chamber itself, we didn't get to have any events last year. We didn't get to bring in E90 exactly for our membership, you know, to get it to be, due to COVID and everything else. We decided, Freedom Fest doesn't bring in E90, but we decided to put all our funds from last year into this year. And the Smiles Group, going with their bigger events, they're bringing a lot of towns. I've actually reached out to Ms. Chief this morning and they're going to actually help us out with Freedom Fest this year. They're going to handle the vendors and travel works and the balancing classes. The group, mainly what I'm here for is two things. First part of it is that the city's always donated to the Chamber the $4,500 for the fireworks. And last year, the Chamber started putting an additional 1,500 with that. Correct, wrong, there's something about $500 that comes, because it works out to this 4,000, that's, it works out as 4,000 for the city and 1,500 for us. It works out to be $5,500 in total that we pay for the fireworks. The company that we usually use to do the fireworks, due to COVID, quit servicing this region. They went, they're strictly up north. So we was on the hunt for somebody to do the fireworks and the guy reached out to me that worked for that company and went to work for another company and he reached out to me to try to get the business again. So going with trying to get things bigger, we have, we went with four, we're still going to do four bands this year. The last, the main head unit, we're not near, we went from a $1,000 budget to a $4,000 budget on a band this year. So we're having, bringing a pretty big headliner this year. But as far as the fireworks go, the first estimate that we get for the same show we done last year is 343-inch shells total. I was hoping, I went to meet with the chief, ended up meeting with Ray. We cannot, under the state laws, we cannot shut 52 highway down. So under that guidance, the biggest shell that we're allowed to shoot is a three-inch shell. Because we're wanting to do a bigger show this year. So I was wanting to go with a four or five-inch shell, but I cannot do it. Under new state guidelines, the field, for y'all who don't know, we shoot in the field beside, down from Mike, out of the little top. The state has issued us a larger, statewide, we have to go to 210 foot circumference from our shooting range to be off of any houses, any roadways or anything like that, being able to shoot a three-inch shell. So the payroll company has come out and we're able to move back in the field farther to get our 210 foot circumference. But they're going, speaking out of turn here, but they're going to run a longer tube to get more explosion out of it, to get more force out of it, to make it bigger, to make up for the distance. But in the main body that we usually spend $5,500, in the main body, there's usually 223-inch shells that they fire off. And then in the grand finale, which is the last, the main hit, they usually shoot 120 shells. So that brings us a grand total, normally our show is 340 shells long. So in this, his proposal, this new company was just really vague. I didn't really like the way they presented theirselves and their estimate and everything. So I reached out to a couple of different companies in the area and there's a guy in Castaneda Springs, I talked to him. He's not able to do the private events, but he turned me on to a guy in Goodwood School, who's partnered with a guy in Castaneda Springs. They're the ones that does a lot of Galveston shows and some more, so they're handling the bigger shows. But long story short, their estimate come in at the $5,500 figure. They're able to do 300 shell, three-inch shells inside the main body and 180 shells inside the grand finale, which brings us a total of 480 shells. So at that point, we'll be doing a show 140 shells larger than what we have in years past. But the part that I'm asking for, I would like to ask the city if we could get an additional $500 funds or if we could split that evenly to get $250 from us and $250 from y'all. They have a package deal for $6,000, we can get 540 total shells, which would give us 200 shells larger than what our show has been passed. So basically, I'm asking for two things. Are we getting the 4,500 and then can we get an additional 250 or 500?
Okay, and in our budget, you were on line out of the 806. For Freedom Fest, $4,500 was dedicated. And also, the Chamber of Commerce, line 722, was allocated an additional $500. So you, you have 5,000 total.
Judy was supposed to have been here with me and I presume there's somehow we don't make something back. We have to pay something back for five, because the check's always $500 less.
I'm not aware of that.
Talking eye contact here, so we can.
Yeah, that's what you have in, in, this was a statement we just voted on. So it is very, you haven't spent any. So you have exactly $5,000 right now. Now, if you're asking for more than that to be appropriated.
It's working, I don't think that, no. I'm sorry about that. That's my miscommunication or misunderstanding. Because if y'all are giving the five, then we would need addition. That would be.
Yeah, David Harrison came before the council a few years ago and it used to just be all donated to Chamber and he felt like it created some problems. It looked like the Chamber of Commerce was giving a lot of money when it was going for Freedom Fest. So he asked that it be separated and it was, I think it was 2018. So, you know, it's been like that. So.
You're good.
So you've got, you've got to total my money and ever had one, whatever you want to. Just submit the paperwork to Ms. Keith.
That's all I need.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing. I've got one thing. Is there a way we can, is the chief still here? I would like to shut down this year for safety purposes from the public bathrooms there, that road up to the handling station. If we could shut that little stretch. Last year, we worked on it at the last minute because NCTC brings that big house and they set that up in the middle of the walking track. So we went to a couple of the councilmen, they allowed us to shut the road down. And then the day of the show, one of the officers would only let us shut a path there. So we had to bring the train out with the kids out into the road where cars were going by. And I really, I didn't like that. So I wanted to try to shut that road down, we're going to move that house basically in the roadway that morning or that day after the event starts. They said they could do it at the last minute, like at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, they're going to move the house over in the road. Now the way the train can continue to run on the walking track and the kids are not having to get out of the roadway with the cars. That's basically, if we can do that.
You're talking about the road work, the residence?
William?
Yes, there are big two, what is it, two? I think they took two houses out, or one or two. I think there is still three or four houses that will be involved after that.
Okay, so you're basically saying from that second street?
The street that goes up to the walkway from there to the green station.
Chief, what do you?
They would have to be afforded an ingress and egress somehow, as long as we can make the way, if they need to go somewhere, they can go. It wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, we can't lock them in, so.
We can take a look at it and see if we can come up with something. I wouldn't imagine, I'm sure the NCTC with that house, and if we run it like from the walking track and maybe only half the road, that way they can still get behind it and turn the dirt like that. That way the train, mainly the train, I'm trying to keep it on that walking track.
Tell you what to do, we've got a month or so, do some homework on it and get the information together and give us a call.
Because we didn't expect it last year for it to be as big, that house to be as big as it was. And then when it arrived, they told us it was set up.
You're talking about the ones that's got the Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi setup. They told us it was a router. They said it was a router. All that, that's a big town, but it's just a little box that's inside.
I was going to say, you need to come back at our next work study or let us know, so we can get it on.
We might have the measurements in the building.
Because if road is closed, the council will have to vote to do it.
Because that was, the officer, he wanted where the ambulance could get in and out.
Exactly.
So we were thinking, the ambulance still has two ways once they get out of there, once they get out of their park.
We need to get the fire chief home and order that also.
Got to get him.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the, I had lost my place in all the scribble, but next item is something I had, there was a, not a considerable amount, but an amount of money that was left out of the CD BG money that wasn't claimed. Westmoreland was contacted by the Tennessee Economic Community Development Department and our representative in that department stated that there is a $50,000 infrastructure grant, infrastructure planning grant that is available for Westmoreland to apply for. It's a 5% match, which would be $2,500. I instructed him to go ahead and start the application process because it was on a timetable. And we're going to use that as for mapping the water system. And if we're fortunate enough to get that, then we can take those funds either out of reserve or we might even have it in the engineering fund to help pay for that because that's what most of our match would go for is paying that. I just need your okay to make sure that we're, we're moving or, you know, I'll pull the plug on it. But I don't think you want to do that by any means, but. Everything is covered and it's moving forward and I've been told we stand a very good chance of getting that. So and when we move into the next item, I'll give you some more information. We'll probably have to have a resolution at a future meeting, but I want the council to be on board with this because it's just came up and it's a good move. So if I can get a motion to proceed on that, it'd be great.
So will I.
I'll second. Councilman Leif makes a motion, Councilman Smalling makes the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries in and must leave. You might want to get you a pencil and paper. I'm going to run through some items that I think that you're going to find interesting. There's a lot of questions to be asked about it, but I'm going to try to hit some highlights. On January the 22nd, the American Library Association awarded a grant to our library. It's to do some, some computers and information to set up for training folks that are coming into the library. The library basically applied for that and received it, but we had to sign on as a, as a kind of a, we encouraged it. So that was awarded and I can't remember the amount of it. I think it was $2,500?
What was it called again?
It was, I forgot the name of what they exactly called it, but it was to, like if you were coming into the library and you needed assistance to use the computer to apply for a job or benefits or something like that, it's my understanding that the computer will have tutorial to help you through it and they will have people to help you with it. So, but it's just one of the many things that's happening. The next one is our wastewater treatment plan. As I announced earlier, the form that you have in front of you from Tennessee Environment and Conservation basically says that we've received a $500,000 grant to assist with that. I was told that it would be $600,000, but right now the paperwork shows $500,000. But there is a chance, uh, that we've been told that that could possibly go. So that would be, uh, uh, you know, as we get into all of this, it will be, uh, something that will be kind of a, a living and breathing document for probably at least the next year, or maybe two years. But, uh, that, that was some good news for us. Uh, the city received a local government award notification from the GNRC for the repurposing of the old Max Building, and that was awarded on January 29th. There was, uh, because of coronavirus, there was no big shindig or anything, but, uh, uh, we did, uh, receive that notification, and, uh, there's going to be lots more. It's going to be said about that in the future. Uh, continuing to move on, there is a Department of Transportation, Urban Transportation Planning Grant, uh, that you voted on not too long ago. It's, uh, for a bike trail and pedestrian walkway. It was a $200,000 grant that municipalities in the county applied for. We received that grant, and, uh, our match, uh, turned out to just almost be nothing on it though. Let's see.
$250?
Yeah, I think it was, uh, $260 to pay our part of the match on that, that, uh, that grant. So, uh, the, uh, firm has already been picked, and, uh, they're working diligently on it. They hope, hope to have the plan turned in to the state in a matter of months. So, uh, there, there's, uh, there's some good things happening on that. Also, to give you another thing on the GNRC, uh, we had a five-year planning grant, uh, that would help us with our strategic plan. That is continuing to move forward. Uh, the one we just discussed a moment ago, the, uh, infrastructure and planning grant of $50,000. Uh, hopefully, that will come. The two that I want to bring to your attention, that so many people are getting information on, uh, there is a coronavirus relief grant that is coming down from the federal government. Uh, John, what's the actual name of that? It's, uh, I'm shy, because I can't remember the offhand. But it, uh, West Morgan is slated to get $646,000 out of it. Okay? Hold on to that thought for a minute. On July the 30th, 31st of this year, the governor has put in several million dollars for municipal grants to help with, basically, the same thing as the $82,000, $83,000 we got last year, or this fiscal year, uh, for a coronavirus relief grant. We're slated to get $82,800 on that. However, yesterday, the comptroller's office, uh, they've been having a lot of meetings on this. The governor's been having meetings on it. The governor has put it in his budget, and it is there, uh, at this time. But a lot of our legislators are basically saying, if you're going to get this $600,000, you may not need our $82,000. So that is basically on hold at this point. So don't, don't be, yeah, don't be planning on spending it until we get it. But $646,000 is basically in the same boat. Uh, it, it has been allocated, but it, it, it was supposed to be distributed, half of it in 2021, '22, and the other half in '22, '23. And you had to have it, uh, spent by 2024.
I wouldn't do that.
All of that's on hold now too. So, uh, as I was telling Mayor Brown and, and, uh, Galton yesterday, I had really hoped that we could use that money for some paving.
Yes.
Because this, uh, this city is in dire need of, uh, of some, uh, of some streets that need to be looked at.
Yes.
Uh, we have lots of complaints that is coming in, uh, and I'll, the update on the paving project, uh, the machine broke down, and they had to order a part for it. So they're going to be picking back up, they didn't go home.
No, that's, it's working on it, just saying that.
Okay, they, they, they didn't just go home, they're continuing to work, so. Uh, but this, uh, there's going to be a block engine on, on, uh, these grants as to, uh, there's been no information really distributed of what it can be used for. Uh, I was told that we could not, uh, do anything, that the money couldn't be used because it would affect our carbon footprint. So paving was out for it. So, uh, as you said, we'll have no problem spending that. Uh, I'm hoping that they will give, uh, relaxed stipulations on it, and we can use it for a lot of things, and we'll discuss that more at work studying, budget sessions, uh, coming up. So, uh, if you've got any questions, I'm glad to answer them and get you any information that I have. But I know the questions are coming up because people are hearing, there's lots of money coming, what are you going to do with it? Uh, but, but the comptroller himself basically said, put it in a separate fund. It's going to be audited separately, and, uh, don't plan on doing anything with it until we tell you what you can do and have our approval. So, uh, with that, is there anything else that needs to be, be said? Or all entertain a motion to adjourn?
So would.
All in favor, please say aye. Thank you, have a good day.